With my microphone, just to remind everybody, please do not speak in the room. If not, I will remind you. I will declare the meeting over in a quiet space. This is our ordinary council meeting for the 28th of November 2022. I will just do an acknowledgement of the country. Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Palaver, Pakeno, Finkel as the traditional and original owners of Lutroweta and continuing custodians of this land on which we gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders, past and present. All persons in attendance are advised that this council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Don't have any apologies for having a full cast tonight, which is wonderful for our first meeting. I might just congratulate everybody on being elected to this position and I thank you for all the work you've done up to this meeting already. It's been wonderful and we thank our general manager and all the staff for facilitating that as well. Any declarations of interest?
Yes, you do, ma'am.
Thank you.
I declare an interest in item 4.2 on the agenda. As I am engaged in the real estate industry, I'll declare an interest. I'm not known to the proponent, nor have I been engaged by the proponent, and therefore will not be leaving the room.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest?
Thank you, ma'am. I declare interest in item 5.5.
And will you be staying in the room or leaving the room, councillor Martin?
No, I'll leave the room, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other declarations of interest?
Yes, ma'am. 5.3. I will be leaving.
Thank you. Thanks, councillor Martin. Any other declarations of interest? No, thank you. So we're moving on to item through the procedural section. 3.1 Confirmation of Minutes. Do I have a mover of minutes for the previous meeting of those that were in attendance on the 24th of October?
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Just me and the procedural, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour that can?
Aye.
Against?
So moved.
Thank you. 3.2 is public question time. 3.2.1, a responses to questions raised upon notice. If I could have a mover of the recommendation there, please?
I move. Second.
Thanks councillor Holster and councillor Murphy. Councillor Holster, any?
Nothing further, I'm so in the minutes.
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
That's all in the report, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment? So if I could have all those in favour? Aye. Against? Thank you. So 3.2.2, questions on notice from the public?
So moved.
Thank you. And second up?
Second.
Councillor Shane, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Ma'am, it all there for a moment, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comment? No, thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, thank you. 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public. If I might just comment, for those that have never done this before or not been here before, we do have certain regulations that people will follow with this question time from the public and we appreciate those that come and talk to us. Thank you. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak, they do so to the podium. I'm assuming that from that, we don't have anyone. Thank you for those in the public gallery tonight. So we will move on to 3.3, questions on notice from councillors. We noticed that we don't have any of those. So moving on to 3.4, notices of motion. So 3.4.1 is the Mersey ferry service and the motion is there for you.
I move, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Martin for voting. Andrew Whitehead, second.
Second there.
Thank you councillor Wilczynski. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
As we know, the ferry has been laid up for a period of time recently because it was deemed not suitable to pass the upcoming survey and therefore deemed to be taken off the run. However, we've had a marine survey that I've been in contact, survey that I've been in contact with, that's already completed five very successful and significant electric hybrid builds and is ready to go and willing to take over the vessel and to put it back on the run and operate it. He wishes to convert the vessel into an electric battery powered vessel with the intention to upgrade it to a hydrogen model with the vessel then having zero carbon emissions, which would be a great outcome for the community and in being the longest continuous service in Australia to have it back on the run. Ferry also would be modified to include just a little access and easier access.
Sorry, councillor Martin. Councillor Murphy, you have something to say?
Yes, I do. One, the motion hasn't been put in relation to what we're actually going on. Mr councillor Martin has continued to explain to us a number of things that I don't see relate to the motion with respect to electrifying a vessel and the survey having been done. I do believe it's proper process, ma'am, that the motion is then put and then the councillors then to speak to the motion with the supporting documentation as it's been provided to councillors. Councillor Martin is obviously providing us with a little bit more information which has been provided in the agenda. Could it be possible that we follow proper process, please?
Thanks, councillor Martin. Councillor Martin, if we can just stick to the motion for the moment and then...
Well, with your indulgence, ma'am, this is a bit of preamble as to why we should be taking over the ownership of the eastern Mersey pontoon. Part of the motion says that's receiving an acceptable business case. My preamble is a lead into that acceptable business case and the conversations that I've had with the proponent that wants to take over the ferry and its background is the reason why we'd be taking out eastern shore pontoon.
So would that be coming from you or coming from the proposed operator?
Sorry, what?
The sustainable business case.
It would be coming from the proponent.
So we might wait for that?
Well, I believe the council has a copy of that already. We're coming up for next workshop. I propose...
Councillors themselves don't have it at the moment. We haven't gone into the workshop.
Correct, that's why I'm leading up for this motion that is coming up. And the preamble is to add weight to the motion that's been put. So councillors have a good understanding of why I've asked to go to the next workshop and receiving an acceptable sustainable business plan to take over the eastern shore pontoon. I've got about 30 seconds left on the preamble, ma'am.
Let's go with the 30 seconds then, councillor Martin.
Point again, ma'am.
Councillor Murphy? Yes?
My point is that the motion actually has not been put.
No, I understand. We're just meant to be getting on with it.
I believe we can, you moved the motion, but the motion wasn't conveyed or verbalised as to what was actually being put. And then I'm quite happy to go into a preamble, there's no issue with that, the process would need to be. We need to know what the motion is.
I like councillor Martin, 30 more seconds to finish on what you're saying and we'll get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Boners have provided a business plan of cancelled return of service which will be discussed in conjunction with the point on the petition of the eastern pontoon. Forms of support for the return of the ferry has been received directly correspondence from Premier Jerry Orpik. Community petition significantly raising 1,000 signatures in around a week. And at the DCCI candidate's forum on the 28th of September, it was noted that every candidate indicated support for the ferry service to return. It is an opportunity to look at, it's an opportunity to look at and one that can assist in getting this historic service back on the run. This motion allows council to responsibly take a look at the condition of the pontoon prior to making any commitment. I look for your support with this motion moving forward.
Thanks councillor Martin. Councillor Wilczynski, if you'd like to comment, please.
Yes, I think it's something we should look at. I think we should workshop it and I think there's no problems with looking at what is available for us to be able to do for our city as it is a major part of history and ongoing transport for the Devonport community.
Thank you very much. Councillor Holster, you have your microphone, if you'd like to comment, thank you.
Yes, I think in principle it's no problem to support this motion, providing we get the business case and the funding to come. I don't have any problem at this stage.
Thank you. Any further comment, councillor Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. Whilst I support the intent of the motion, I believe that it's putting a horse before the cart with respect to council expending resources and undertaking due diligence of a particular pontoon when we haven't had any consultation or information from a workshop perspective of the operator, their bona fides. Having been someone who actually put their hand in their pocket as part of the community group that purchased the western side pontoon and gifted it to the council, I'm pretty well versed in understanding the importance of this particular service. However, I'm also understanding that the risk of the exposure to potentially committing to undertaking the ownership of something without having gone through a proper process around understanding the operator, their intent, their capacity to run the service, it leaves the council because if the service fails or only operates for a short period of time, the council would then be left with the responsibility of the eastern side pontoon. Now, having done some extensive investigations once, not long after Kinetic brought it to council, their intention not to continue the service, some of this investigation was undertaken and the cost that would be associated with removing the eastern side pontoon from its current location, if it was to become redundant and council owned it, would then be borne on the community. As it sits at the moment, it is owned by a private entity. And if an operator comes along with a sound business case and is willing to take some of the risks that is associated with that particular business case, i.e. the eastern side pontoon, it has been in private hands before. There's no reason why the operator, Kinetic have made it public that they're willing to gift that pontoon to a new operator as well as the ferry. We should limit the exposure of the community to potentially having to take on that financial responsibility as well. So I'm quite happy to support the intent, but I cannot support the motion because it's putting the horse before the cart. I think we need to sit down with the proponent, the proposed proponent, and get an understanding of their level of commitment prior to committing to undertaking due diligence of something that is owned privately with a view to actually then taking ownership of it. There's no net benefit. If Kinetics willing...
Just aware of the time, councillor.
Three minutes there and I can take leave and number three. That if they're willing to gift the pontoon, why wouldn't the private operator take that on as well? There's no cost, so... And eliminates the risk for the community going forward.
Thank you councillor Martin. Councillor Murphy? Was there any other further comment? Councillor Shane, thank you.
I'd like to commend councillor Martin for bringing the motion forward and note the work that he's put into it. I'm a huge supporter of the ferry, you know, I campaigned on the basis of keeping it and, you know, really protecting the amazing heritage that that ferry embodies. However, at this point, I would be a little bit concerned that supporting the motion prior to seeing the business case, the general public may not remember the various conditions upon which the motion was supported and I think on this occasion, I don't support the motion, but, you know, I'm very happy for it to go to workshop and note out some of these details. I just purely, purely because I think we need to be really clear on what we're actually submitting. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Shane. Obviously, just quickly before I get any further comment, councillor Martin, are you willing just to change, modify the motion to say, to take it back to a workshop?
I'm happy to take it back to a workshop there, but the motion, whilst it's dot pointed conducting a full inspection and the second one is receiving, doesn't mean that it's in that order either because it doesn't say A, it doesn't say one or two. So we can receive an acceptable and sustainable business case and have a look at that at the next council workshop. Then we can conduct a full inspection and due diligence to the pontoon to understand condition.
Thank you. So you can mark this to later use?
Yes, both those items up there and the opportunity to go to a workshop first is still part of that motion.
Thank you. Councillor Wilczynski, do you have a question?
More of a comment again?
You really like to comment already, that you have a question? You can put it into a question.
Well, I would say it's go into a workshop. It puts it something, no, I haven't got a question.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I've just got this feeling that anything to do with water costs a lot of money and anything to do with bugs costs a lot of money. So we need to be careful in what we might do. Whilst I like the idea of the ferry, it needs to be able to be sustainable and I'm not sure if we agree with councillor Murphy that we might be just getting a bit ahead of ourselves and we probably need to do that first bit first. So that's my comment.
Thank you, councillors. Any further comment?
I will just comment myself. I certainly totally understand the notice of motion. I certainly think that it would be wonderful to see the ferry go on the water for the right reasons and for the right operator. I hope to see that in the future and we just need to, I think, get a bit more information from the proponent that has come to us privately at the moment and not through the whole council yet. We'll bring it back to a workshop, we'll certainly be looking at this in the future, in the near future. It's not gone away, but I would be very much doubting that we need to go this way. So my answer will be no, I'm opposed. But we'll find out from the list of the councillors. Councillor Martin, you to summarise, please.
Thank you, ma'am. As I pointed out before, in the motion itself, it's not in order, it doesn't have to be in order. It doesn't list one, two, or A, B. It has dot points. The reason being is because it can be go to a workshop, discuss the business plan and then we can conduct a full inspection, due diligence on the pontoon to understand its condition after we've spoken and it's included in that motion. As far as the ownership of the pontoon, council does own the western pontoon and we'll be well aware of the requirements and maintenance of that pontoon. So the ownership of the eastern pontoon would probably not be allowed to step. The operator or the proponent is interested in the ferry service and the ferry itself and is doing this off his own back as in converting the ferry etcetera at his cost. He's not asking or seeking to ownership of the eastern ferry. So I say to our councillors that it does mention in that motion that it will go to council's next workshop. Doesn't mean that it says that the inspection has to come first. It says we can have a review at council's next workshop. And that's quite clear in there as it's not in any order. Thank you.
Thank you. At the end of the debate, I'll ask for those all in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those that say nay?
Nay.
So we'll need a sharp hands, please. So for the ayes, if you could just raise your hand for us to make the count. So we have councillor Wilczynski, councillor Holster, councillor Martin. And those against, you can show your hands. Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis. Councillor Moore, councillor Shane, councillor John. The motion's lost. Thank you. I appreciate the debate. So going to plain matters, item four. I now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993 with consideration of agendas items 4.1 and 4.2. So 4.1, PA 2022.0168 is 19 North Caroline Street, East End, Port Residential. Do I have a mover of the recommendation? Councillor Murphy, second. And councillor Shane, thank you. Councillor Murphy, comment?
Thank you, ma'am. It's all in the report, obviously this has been in the pipeline for a considerable period of time. There has been some comment from the community in relation to seeing what's happening to the site. This was pre-approved back in June of last year. So what's been put on the table tonight is as it is there in that particular plan, looking at the five bed construction of or redevelopment of the former St Michael's Rest Spot Centre. So the recommendation is to approve it, so, you know, obviously it's a very, very needed service. So I encourage my fellow councillors to support the recommendation.
Thanks councillor Murphy. Councillor Shane, further comment?
Yes, look, I think there's a, there's just a desperate shortage of rest spot facilities in the community. This is in addition to existing facility. I noted with interest the comments from the public around parking and fully accept the planners' comments in relation to how these visitors would be getting to site, not necessarily driving themselves. On that, the details in the report, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, councillor Holster?
Yes, there is a shortage of rest spot care in Devonport, so I fully support the proposal.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, you can move to close.
Consider closing, ma'am.
Thank you. All ayes in favour?
Aye.
Against? Or ayes have it? Thank you. 4.2, PA 2022.0177, 110 North Caroline Street, North. The recommendation is there, if I could have a mover of the motion.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, and the second, second? Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
It's all in the report, ma'am. Realistically, there's one representation. I think those issues will be addressed between the proponent and the representative. It's been assessed by Development Infrastructure and Workstart and it's been approved with condition, so I don't think we can do any of those to the country.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy, any comment? Oh, councillor Martin, I apologize.
No problem.
I'll get a fight with it.
Now, sorry, just a question. You've got a conflict of interest, can you still... The last one?
Now, this is happening in the mix, so someone has moved, I shouldn't be divided. I'll send her, it was mute for a while.
Councillor Martin, it's up to councillor Murphy. He has to plead an interest because he said he wants to own it.
Okay, cool, yeah, no problem. Yeah, just want to show them the procedure, but yeah, we'll acknowledge that there was one representation about a road, but I think that was largely covered in the report. No problems?
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, you can move to close.
Consider closing, ma'am.
Thank you. All ayes in favour?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to the reports, item five. 5.1, these waiting arrangements.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a moment, sir? Sorry. So councillor Murphy, sorry, who was second up?
Martin.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Murphy, any comment?
Yes, ma'am, just to me and the procedural process, I think we'll be unanimous in maintaining the status quo. So recommendation is there for us to proceed as we are.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Completely agree with councillor Murphy, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Councillor Ennis?
Yep, I think it's good that we continue to start meetings after 5.30, which is good.
After workouts. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy?
Consider closing, ma'am.
Thank you. All ayes in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carry. 5.2 is appointed to committees, bodies, authorities, I can't say it, authorities, panels and working groups. Do I have a recommendation, please?
Second.
Councillor Martin and councillor Shane. Councillor Martin?
No, councillor Ennis.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Ennis? Councillor Ennis?
Martin, please. Keen people. Keen people put their hands up to being involved in these committees.
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Yeah, no, I think it's a really good spread of skills across all the committees. I'm not sure everyone putting their hands up.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Holster, we did have a discussion. Any further comment?
There's probably a couple of things that I'd probably need a proxy for Semet Australia. It's a community group in Sheffield, Latrobe, Penish, Latrobe and Devonport. And I do find that it does clash with other meetings on the same night, so if someone's willing to be a proxy for those meetings, it'd be very handy, so apologizing.
It's best if we did actually get that suggested tonight, if that was all I'm saying about it tonight. Councillor Murphy?
Through you, ma'am. I'd be happy to take that on, but we will need to add that to the motion.
Yes.
So moved.
More than happy.
Thank you. And councillor Shane, you can give that. Thank you. So that's put a proxy for councillor Murphy to Semet Australia. Are there any others that, anybody that queries about? This is the time to speak up. that anybody that queries about? This is the time to speak up. councillor Hollister, your light's still on, so.
Sure.
Can you shoot that? Thank you. We'll work that out then. councillor Ennis, if you could close the debate?
Thank you, everyone. Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Thank you. And thank you for making that work tonight. So we are on to 5.3.
So moved. Second.
councillor Ennis has just loaded the room. If you could just allow him to do that, thank you. councillor Martin, we move that. Thank you. councillor Murphy, do you second?
Only if the mover decides which option to take.
Sorry, what's that? Sorry.
Only if the mover decides option one or option two.
Oh, yes, please. councillor Martin?
Thank you. Option one.
Option one?
Second admit. Second admit.
councillor Martin, would like to comment?
Thank you, mayor. Craig and Darren Stevens are definitely characters and personalities and regular supporters of the Devonport Football Club in the footy matches and the cricket matches that are played at the Devonport Oval. Local tweens were quite passionate about the game, football, and one of our supporters of Devonport. Well-recognised by the members of the Devonport community, vocal supporters of the club, and certainly not shy or hesitant to point out to the performance of individual players, especially the opposition ones, on the field in the men in white. You could, with no stretch of the imagination, call them the Yavers of the Devonport Oval. The Yavre, of course, is a well-known heckler of the Sydney Cricket Ground. It's a fitting tribute for such characters. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. councillor Murphy, comment?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Martin. I think it is more than fitting and should be endorsed and supported on council.
Thank you. Any further comment?
If I may, I certainly think it's wonderful to see this. Sometimes it's some of the nicest things we can do is honour people. And the way that they've gone about this, I think it's a wonderful and fitting tribute. So I certainly... councillor Martin, if you'd like to...
Consider it made, please.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Thank you. We need councillor Ennis to come back. Thank you, Mr Scurvy. Thank you, councillor Ennis. 5.4, under three minutes, the annual general, 18th, 24th of October. If I don't have a recommendation, move on those that were at the meeting, if that's all right.
So moved.
councillor Murphy?
Second.
councillor Hollister, thank you. councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. It's all there for everyone to see. It's good that we are counting to continue with the trial of the continuation of the parking concession for residential rate payers 50 years or more. And again, as it states, that we will then continue to review that at budget deliberations time. With the five motions that were presented to council on the evening, which was about standard for us, it was an interesting meeting. So it's all there for everyone to consider.
Thank you. councillor Hollister?
All in the minutes, it's not a further debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Yeah, just quickly. councillor Shane? Thank you, mayor. Look, it's no small thing, paying rates 50 years or more. It really is when you get that annual amount that you've got to pay. And I wholeheartedly support some sort of acknowledgement by the city to those rate payers. You know, they're responsible for building a lot of public assets. So wholeheartedly support, and I'm glad it's continuing. Hopefully, this will mean a few more of those 50-year rate payers will sort of approach council and say they might be eligible.
Thank you. Thank you. Have you got a big comment? Thank you. councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. I fully endorse councillor Shane's comments. And hopefully, we do get some more publicity around this. And we do have some more rate payers who have been within our community and paying rates for 50 years plus reach out to council and seek their support if they so desire. Having said that, consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Consider it carried. 5.5. Tenure Board Contract for the Tugger Road Traffic Management. The recommendation is there. And thank you, councillor Martin.
So moved.
councillor Murphy and councillor Ennis, was that?
Yes.
Thank you. councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. It's all there. It's gone through the proper process. Good to see it's under budget. And I think it'll be a valuable asset to the Tugger Road community.
Thank you. councillor Ennis?
Yep, looking forward to it. Thank you. No further, nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comment? No, councillor Murphy, do you think you can close the comments?
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Consider that carried. So if we could have, thank you. councillor Watson? councillor Martin, coming back into the room. We're now on 5.6, the Devonport is good to trial.
So moved.
Recommendation is there. Thank you, councillor Murphy. councillor Moore? councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. Obviously, this particular topic has received quite a significant amount of publicity over recent years with other LGAs. Devonport City Council had been very responsible and very considered by workshop in this appropriately late or early last year. I must say, recall. And the conversations around that particular point, if you like, around only having these particular vehicles on our shared pathways was one common sense. With this recommendation, I think it's going to provide the community opportunity, and especially visitors to our community, to easily and readily access our shared pathway. I would like to see the area extended a little bit further, but obviously that'll be up to the operator. Potentially, if it was able to go all the way to the Donner River Railway. With respect to its area, it does provide a significant opportunity for people to potentially leave the hotel, jump onto an e-scooter, follow the shared pathway all the way to the Donner River Railway, get on the train, go for a little journey, and then either get off the train at Coles Beach, get onto an e-scooter at the shared pathway, and ride back to the hotel. Visiting Teagara, the Bluff, Aitken Head Point, everything else we had to offer. I note there has been some concern with respect to safety issues raised by members of the community. But as with anything, with anything, there's always risk. The shared pathway currently has these particular types of vehicles going on now, whether it's through a private rental scheme or privately owned ones. We also have cyclists with electric bikes doing exactly the same thing. So I think it's really going to come down to the operators on these particular things. And I do seem to recall that we even had the conversation about speed limiting the particular scooters even more than what in some other LGAs that they currently are. So I would hope that my fellow councillors would support the recommendation. And hopefully, we would potentially have a conversation to see it even travel further to the Donner River Railway into the future. So I'll put it to everyone else.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. councillor Moore?
Yeah, I'm excited by this trial. I do understand that there are some community members who are worried about the risks to other people using the tracks. I was really excited to see the proposal that we are only going to be able to ride, that people are only going to be able to ride those scooters in certain areas. I think that's a great limitation. I'm excited because I think it will help tourists, they'll have some way to go, something to do, as well as our normal community members. It just gives Devonport something else, another attraction that we can all use. I'm excited by it.
Thank you. Any further comment? councillor Vining?
Yeah, agree with councillor Murphy and councillor Moore. I'm also excited by the prospect of these scooters in the city. I think it's very prudent that the council with this trial has kept them out of the CBD and for the most part, off streets. Councillor Murphy mentioned going towards the Donner River Railway. I think also, as important, is the link to the eastern side of the city, utilizing the bridge. And it'd be great to see the trial eventually extended further to Pato Beach. There is, I guess, some issues with crossing streets on that side. Hopefully, with further developments, they will be avoided. Fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Uh, Pauline? I sound too awful, obviously. councillor Shane?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I agree with the previous speakers. I have had a few representations made to me from senior citizens concerned about the scooters and potential accidents with the elderly. But hopefully, with the rollout of the trial, there'll be sort of a really good communication slash marketing campaign so that people are aware of the extra risk profile on the paths. Although I note councillor Murphy's comments that they've already got bicycles and whatnot. There were a couple of issues in the high bar down south. So I think what we want to do is just try and avoid that so that the program can go from strength to strength. Because I think it really is just, you know, a signal that the city is getting bigger, more cosmopolitan. These scooters along the bike hire really allow visitors to get out and about and see the amazing tourism spots that we have on offer, particularly Donner River Railway. So yeah, wholeheartedly agree, this is a great thing, that the cons plan has got to be measured and clear so that senior citizens are aware of the extra risk on the footpath that is currently out there. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hollister?
Yes, I'm going to support the trial. We know that there's been accidents around the states in other municipalities. I think it's a risk that we need to take. It's no different to riding a bike or hitting the scooters that aren't motorized. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I think there'll only be probably a certain demographic that will enjoy this type of transport. I think the trial will enable us to see whether it really does provide transport across the bridge and across the other side. See how that goes. I'm sure they'll monitor it carefully. I think the trap... I travel along that pathway a lot. And it'll be interesting to see how people get on. Now, I know the ones, the unlimited scooters that go, e-scooters that go along that track and so forth, go at very high speeds compared to what these will go. Generally, I find that where you go, there will be a lot of, apart from Saturday morning when park runs on, it's not that crowded, the paths. There's enough space for people to work around and get through. So hopefully, it'll be safe. I would like to see it go a bit into other areas. But this just skirting around the outside will be a trial.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I would just point out that obviously, we've looked into this quite vigorously and waited to see what was going on in other council areas, as well as in other jurisdictions around the country. Mr Scurvy's done a lot of work with us, and we worked into the workshop as well. We've got more control over these e-scooters than anything. That's the biggest thing. And I don't know if anyone's used them. I have in Cobart. I haven't been able to use them in Vining just yet. It's a different company in Cobart, I will point out, to Vining, and the company that we work with this one in Vining. But the control on those scooters was really impressive for me. When we got into the CBD area, it had to, it spoke to me. It was quite bizarre. And told me that it was going to slow down, and what I wanted to do. So it was restricted to that area of what speed it could do. There was controls over taking on the machine itself. There was controls where you left the machine behind, you had to take a photo of it sitting up properly for them to allow it to be over, otherwise they were going to keep charging you. And so you have to lead it in a responsible manner as such, which is probably things that people don't realise until they're going to use these machines. And it is a trial. We will re-train that. We're trialing them. At any stage, if we think things are going too wrong, we will control that situation and pull them out if we have to. We're hoping it's not going to be the case, but we understand that there is going to be a bit of a compromise by everybody about where we're trialing it and on this footpath itself. And we certainly hear those people that have protested and said, "We're not sure why you're doing it on that footpath." "It's better than being on the roads, it's better than being up into the residential areas, and it's better than being in the CBD." For the moment, while we're trialing it. And we will be monitoring. We understand the safety aspects. Some people that are on the Access and Inclusion Committee have certainly put in their protest about it and said, "We must understand what's happening in other cities or other towns." And to be mindful of that, we certainly are. At the moment, there is a problem. We want people to take photos, send it to along our staff send and solve or the facility that we have on our website. And just keep your ears and eyes open for us, that we can make it safe for everybody. We want to have a go at this because we want to make something new into the city that's going to work for those that need it. So I appreciate everybody's comment. councillor Murphy, if you could close the comments?
Thank you, mayor. And I thank fellow councillors for their input to the debate. I think this is obviously going to be, as councillor Shane said, a hard step forward. I think, as I stated some period of time ago in that particular workshop, it's more a tourism opportunity than anything else. And market forces will dictate how long the operator will either continue with the trial. If it's successful, and I hope it is, it'll be a good thing for the community. If it's not, that's totally up to them. At the end of the day, we've lived without them. But I think I would be looking forward to if I was in town and I wanted to get to the Bluff Precinct, you know, in a short manner without having to drive my vehicle, knowing how to come back here. It would be ideal just to jump on that and look around there and come back. Having said that, now closing the debate.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Consider that carried. Thank you very much. 5.7 is naming of...
Move option three?
Sorry?
Move option three, which I...
5.7 of naming. Just, I'll finish the title, naming of public open spaces. Thank you, councillor Martin, for option three.
Point of order, mayor. Where's option three? I'm about to read that out. Thank you. I'm point of order, mayor.
We actually have to have...
The recommendation is option one, option two. Again, I can't see where councillor Martin could move option three when that has not been presented to the community via the agenda, which again, is proper process. If councillor Martin wishes to present another option, we would first have to go through a... That's correct. We can't...
Well, if, point of order, if you let me finish, instead of interjecting, I said I was going to read the motion out.
Point of order, mayor. The thing is, if that was the case, the option would have been put through the agenda also for the community. I do believe a proper process would be is if there isn't anyone to support either option or move or a second up of option one or option two, then the debate's over. Is that correct? Very correct.
Just give me a moment, councillor Murphy. If I can confirm with my general manager? Thank you. Thank you. General manager, what we will do is allow for the option through it. Yes, you will need to name it, explain it, but then for later to get a second up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move the motion that the naming of the public open space adjoining the Noater Hotel adjacent to Muscle Rock Point in Roundhouse Park will be referred back to a council workshop for further review.
So councillor Martin, do you have that in mind to offer to...
Yeah, through you, mayor. I think what councillor Martin affected with that is moving a seizure motion.
Correct. Well, I think you'll probably find that, from my understanding, that if the options that you have up on the board, I don't have to accept. And whether it hasn't come up as a procedural motion at the moment, because I'm moving a third option.
Point of order, mayor, again.
councillor Vining, just give me a second.
I do believe I might have moved... It's through you, mayor. It's the same outcome. It's the intent of the motion that councillor Martin would be moving to do. It's a, the intent of the motion that Councilor Martin would move is to do further adjuvory workshop. He's also entitled to have those additional words and should get a second up and go through that path.
And it can be helped back if the council doesn't want it.
Just point of order, just for clarification. Does that mean that Councilor Martin, instead of screaming out option two, would like to actually move a procedural motion? And then provide the content of the procedural motion, which would then require a mover and a second up, and then he puts the council to bear the debate and then make a decision on this?
Now, I will be making a decision on this, Councilor Murphy.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your advice. But what I think we will do is allow this motion at the moment, for it to be put up and see if we get a second up. But I just need the information to be given to Ms. Jordan, please. And then it's up to our councillors here to decide whether there's a second up.
A second up.
Thank you. So just maybe this will get this type of stuff so that people can see what it is in its entirety. And then we'll let out the debate as well.
For clarification, ma'am, if we're going to go down this particular process, if Councilor Martin's motion is not carried, therefore-
Councilor Murphy, no, I won't ask you to debate this just at the moment, please.
No, I'm seeking clarification. If, if the motion is not carried, then-
We will go back to option one, shall we?
No, is that correct?
Thank you. I'm quite happy with your statement. Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. So option three is there now for our councillors to say. We do have a mover and a second up, so the mover, Councilor Martin, can now speak to that motion.
Thank you, ma'am. I went on public record before the election in regards to the process of this naming process. It was moved by councillor Lakeoff on the twenty-second of August and then amended to include public consultation with Lions Plaza to be included as one of the names presented for public consideration, which was unanimous for the councillors who chained up. I considered it, it, it better to push polling and that councillors shouldn't have actually moved to push that name forward for public consultation. With the survey that went out to the public, it named four options, which had Lions Plaza named as the first option, and then the Waterfront Park as a second option. Living City Master Plan naming the area the Waterfront Precinct. So it's difficult that people would vote on thinking that it would be the Waterfront Precinct's Waterfront Park. Point one. Point two, I think that the people who voted on that survey also had difficulty in not seeing anybody else's name or suggestion for that, only having to vote on four options or suggest another one which no one would actually see. I don't think that's a good process. I think that the litter restricts the public from seeing the full picture and having the ability to vote on other options. Previously with the naming of the Paranormal Centre, there was an independent committee, from memory, that had all options in front of them and they went through a process and ended up voting unanimously at the end for the Paranormal Centre. It was an independent committee made up of community people and was chaired by and attended by a fellow orderman at that stage. Living City Master Plan states as one of its objectives, establish a platform on which to realise a long-held vision to open the city to the waterfront. Muscle Rock Point, Roundhouse Park are historic names that relate to the area. The Paranormal Centre, sitting on the fringe of that area, has a name that also relates to the area. I suggest, going back to the workshop, because I don't think, as I said, this process is correct, but also I don't think that the name suggested fits in where it surrounds, is unique to Devonport, relates to the area, or provides the opportunity for historic stories to be told, and doesn't highlight the significance of the area. With all due respect to the intent, I feel that this current process is a knee-jerk reaction to a motion, is rushed, tainted and somewhat confusing. Currently, I believe there is no definitive consensus amongst councillors from discussions we've had before. We have one chance to get this right and we should take our time to get it right and not be rushed into it. And I look forward to councillor's support.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. Councilor Viney, would you like to?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm also not overly excited about either of the first two options that were outlined tonight and wouldn't have been happy to proceed with either of those. I feel like the Waterfront Park as one of the naming options within the Waterfront Precinct was pretty lazy creative and shouldn't have been considered an option to take to the public survey. I'm certainly glad that Lions Plaza was put up and had a champion and a story with it. However, I think it would have been great if other options being considered would have had as much thought put into it. I think with the survey and the four hundred responses, there was a couple of certainties that we could pull out of that. And the first one is that I don't think there's an appetite to call it a plaza at all. In fact, the vast majority voted for something being called a park. I tend to agree with the public in, in that regard. I also think that if you interpret out the response that perhaps the most popular response was one of these two, or you could interpret it that overwhelmingly, as in seventy-five percent, wanted something else. Having four options listed on the survey, as councillor Martin said, I don't agree that it was, it was tainted, but I think it was more unintentional bias and it certainly limited the imagination of the community because we got well over a hundred other names that we certainly haven't considered here tonight. I think it's important to note that the name of this park will certainly outlive everyone at the table. And I don't think it's a trivial decision and I think it's important that we take our time to get it right. I certainly don't want to make a habit of having to change names for things that councillors name and then years later decide to change. Also, I think it's important to remember for everyone that it's the councillors around this table who ultimately decide on the name, taking into the community consultation into account. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilor Viney, pressure there. Councilor Holster?
Yes, I too have a problem with it. I think this is a very important park that we need to get right. I'd probably agree with option one, but I think there's enough discussion of the workshop and around the table tonight, but I think it's better to lay it on the table for a further workshop to make sure that it is right. And it is, is cancelled, it's got to make the decision quietly.
Thank you, Councilor Holster. Councilor Guncinski?
Yes, I think really the Lions has the history, but I, I believe we can be a little bit more thoughtful of what we're doing with the community process. The Plaza was one of the things that I didn't like about it. So I thought of a shopping centre, but I'm looking at bits and pieces as actually an open public space, which does relate to the area, but I would like to see it workshop.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilor Murphy?
Thank you, ma'am. Look, I understand the level of angst that fellow councillors may feel in relation to this particular process, as I probably did four, four years ago, having to come in and make some quite big decisions with respect to the direction of the entire community, largely based upon information that was done and work that was done prior to being elected. There was a bit of faith in process. I suppose the thing is that the, the original presenter of the motion, I'm pretty confident would have undertaken a reasonable level of community consultation prior to bringing that motion, notice of motion in the August. I, I don't think a long-serving representative of the community, an elected representative of the community, would have done so on a whim and I think would have been very considered in this particular approach. The fact that in the August that that notice of motion was actually put and was endorsed and I, I disagree with councillor Martin, he has a personal particular view on the process, or the perceived bias with respect to what was put to the community. But the community didn't actually say anything about that. No one jumped up and down about the process. In actual fact, it was a very sound process, one that council had engaged very similar processes in a number of other things that had been considered by council. I think we need to be very mindful of that is the fact that if in the future someone puts a notice of motion up that someone personally doesn't like it, after it's gone through a community consultation process and then wants to change it, it really then, we would lose the respect of the community with regard to why are they going through a process? Why are they bothering to ask us and engage with us? Why would we bother electing them if they just want to do what they want to do? And I think we run a real risk of doing that. The report is pretty conclusive. Now, I'll be the first to admit, Lions Plaza, I thought it insane. But through the workshop process, and again through the last one which we sat through, and I think we were part of that with respect to the most recent one, it really did actually grow on me with regard to understanding the whole area. And I think councillor Martin, to sort of, you know, people who have lived here for a long period of time, whether Lions has any affiliation with this particular city and part of our community, the Lions Buss has been there for a long period of time. You know, they're, they're actually, what's the word I've been looking for? The Rotary Club of Devonport North actually commissioned those, which I remember of. Whether it's, the name is unique, I think it is. And it does provide the opportunity to tell the story in respect to our history. You know, it's not too many other communities the size of Devonport that can turn around and say that, you know, and for Tasmania as a whole, that the first prime minister of our country, not the first one, sorry, the first prime minister from Tasmania was from Devonport. And the fact that the, the legacy of his wife and the achievements that she made in public life was significant. And, and then we others will have different views on that. But the fact that we went through a community survey which provided the opportunity for feedback via the online survey, no one said anything, "Well, hang on a minute, we don't like that. We don't like this. I don't like the process." No one said that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Skirving, but, you know, I think we've got to be very careful that when we go through a process of community engagement, but then because we're not comfortable or we don't like it-
We're of a time, councilor.
That's okay, now I'll take lead if I have to. Because I do believe this is important, but let's go to a workshop if that's going to be the decision. If we go to a workshop, that means it then has to come back to another council meeting, which then means we have to go to another community consultation period, which means when that parkland is open, it will not have a name. Simple. I think there has been a fair and reasonable process undertaken and I would encourage the councillors not to support option three and have the Gunson to make a decision. There are two relevant options there that have been put to the community. Make a decision.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Any further comment? Councilor Innis?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly think that we may well come back to this name. I think we need to consider and consider all again because I was part of the workshop and there were quite few people who, who weren't comfortable with the outcome. I think we need to get comfortable with it and ensure that we make the right decision and make a really good decision. It will be there for a long time, we hope, in, in terms of the name. We need to make sure that as an elected group, yes, we do take into account, but it's not, I don't know whether it's binding, it's a guidance for us. We need to be guided by the community, but we also are elected to make the decision. And so we need to make a correct decision and one that the majority of us are going to feel comfortable with. It'd be great if it had everyone, but that's not how it works. You only have to have a majority around the table and a bit more talk and consultation will make sure that happens. So we want people to be comfortable with the decision, we want to have a right one. I'm not sure whether the park will be ready or whatever it is by then. Without a name, it's taken a long time as it is. It could take another three months, the way the progress has been going on. So, yeah, my, my thoughts are that happy to take it back and consider it more.
Thanks, Councilor Innis. Any further comment?
I, I, I will just say that we go back to the days when there was a concept designed and conversation years and years ago, we're doing that almost twenty years, about the Riverside Plaza project. And that's certainly a completely different walk of walk we've ended up with and I was part of that. And we can go back and see that we certainly need to be away from that name. And I really believe that our workshop was good that we, and we did have, and it was a robust and passionate conversation that was amongst us to be councillors and I appreciate that. I thought it was fantastic, actually, because it means we're taking it seriously that we've been elected to make decisions on behalf of the community and we're not doing it lightly. And I, I really respect that. So I'm quite comfortable myself going with option three currently, personally. And I certainly think that that way we respect that we've had community consultation. We will bring that back to the workshop and hopefully we can then come up with some plan to work together to come up with a very important name for a very important project. And I think it will be therefore the time for us to know that we've made the right decision and then we can answer to the public when they do question us on where, why we came up with the name that we did. If there is no further comment, councillor Martin, if you could close on option three, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Thing about this is, as is said going around the room, we need to get it right. We need to get it right first time. Seventy-five percent, as councillor Viney said, of the public did not see the other contributions in naming the area. They saw four and they voted on four or provided a name, which was not seen by other people. As far as, nobody complained about the process, or less than correct. I did and I did it publicly and I did it loud and proud in regards to that and suggested that didn't what this advisory committee actually taken on as an independent body, as a representative community, because they're going to inherit this park I. So I'd say the process was tainted, it was a knee-jerk reaction, and I think that it was rushed. That's first of all, and that's the way I look at it through my eyes as an experience. As far as the park, I again go with councillor Innis in regards to when it may be opened. I think it was sort of time to be able to do a process and I'm sure that the opening or the official opening of the park could be delayed to meet the opening or the release of the name in conjunction with that. And that's why I suggest that we send it back to a workshop so we get the process right and so we get the name right and so we can be all proud of it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can see the eyes, please. If I can have-
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
So if I can have sharp hands opposed to the eyes? Council Innis, councillor Guncinski, councillor Martin, councillor Holster, councillor Viney, councillor Viney, councillor John. Against, sharp hands, councillor Murphy, any questions? The eyes have it. Thank you. So we're moving to option three. Thank you. Moving on to item six, information, six point one certificate of election. The recommendation is there?
Don't move.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Any second up?
Second.
Councilor Viney? Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations to everybody. It's all there for everyone to see.
Thank you, councillor Viney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, your last?
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Against? So thank you. Six point two workshops and briefing sessions. Now this is the last council meeting, the recommendation is there. Can I have a move please?
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Barney? The second was councillor Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Barney?
Yeah, procedural matters on the report.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy?
Yes, mayor, just from the workshop around the Santa Lucha. Very exciting that we finally settled on a location and I think this is something that we've been working towards for a long period of time and very exciting with what is now being proposed. And the fact that the technology has changed in the period of time since we first brought this to council, that council actually has to control over the content, which is very exciting, especially when we've got Mr. Dobson sitting there with all that he can provide for us and it'll be a fantastic asset for the workshop.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Barney, your last, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So moved. Thank you. Six point three, the mayor's lovely report. So moved. Thank you councillor Moore and councillor Shane. Councillor Moore, your call.
I'm sure it was great to see the transition between Mayor Rockliff and Mayor Jarman. Jarman has done quite a lot in the 12 days that the report tells us, so congratulations on a great start.
Thank you very much. Councillor Shane, your call.
Yes, thanks, mayor. So I've had to attend a couple of events with you since the election. Really think you're drawing the city proud and obviously continuing in form of Mayor Rockliff's tradition, packing quite a bit into the old program there, so best of luck, especially approaching this silly season. Going to get pretty busy, but well done.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'd like to just endorse the previous two speakers with respect to, you know, a very smooth transition. Mayor Rockliff was a good mayor for our community and I have no doubt he will do the same because you have been very, very busy. More importantly, if you could provide us maybe a bit of an overview with the airport, meaning having the David Race of the airport CEO in relation to their master plan. If you would like to indulge us with anything that might be relevant.
Oh, certainly we have to. Well, definitely, mayor, and I'm fortunate to get an audience with David Race. So that we could get a bit of an overview first of all before attending and being in front of the media. So that we were up today with as much as we could, which we really appreciated in understanding we were newly elected and we needed to catch up. So we really appreciated the time that he put into that. And that certainly then gave us the information we needed going forward for the announcement. And it's a wonderful announcement that we know that obviously transport is very serious about what's going on in the north west coast and globally having a huge amount of money spent in the Mersey River via transport. Now they're looking seriously at our airport and the master plan shows that the future is looking very good. Thank you. Any further comment?
Yeah, just through you, mayor, just reiterate my previous comments when we met with Dave.
Yours, thank you, sir. Councillor Shane.
Beg your pardon. Yeah, through you, mayor. Just reiterating my comments when we met with Dave. The master plan, you know, we've been waiting for it five years, but it means jobs and growth, economic growth for both Devonport and the tribal councils. So it's very exciting and I look forward to next stage of consultation with that plan. Thank you.
Any further comment? Uh, councillor Moore, your last.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Oh, considering that carried. Thank you. Six point four is the general manager's report. Can I have a move please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second to?
Agreed.
Councillor Holster, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Just one comment there, mayor. One point five of the report, our governance staff and busy assisting voters during the, obviously there was a fair amount of confusion being a first time that the whole electoral process was undertaken. But more importantly, the TDC's by habit bill is $163,000. Does the GM have any rough estimates in relation to the cost to council on top of that with the use of our staff? And is it something that we will consider sending the TDC invoice for?
Through you, mayor, certainly onerous for our customer service and government staff. We would have had at least two people tie up pretty much full time for about two weeks through that voting period. And it's something that I understand the gap taking up on behalf of the sector with the state government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Barney?
Thank you, mayor. I thought this one was interesting because of the topical nature of the naming of the new park, that the renaming of the Don Reserve Hall in the previous minutes resolutions is still in progress and that one was passed back in April, so these things do take time. Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Councillor Holster?
Just a question. GM Meglet, the CEO of the indie school, I've noticed they've been doing a bit of construction over there the last 12 months or so. What have they up to?
Yeah, through you, mayor. You had a meeting with the CEO, which is to, they reinforced their plans to stay in the city and continue to grow and he provided an outline on how successful it's been and yeah, just really committing to staying there. They are speaking, doing some minor refurbishment inside the building. They want to, they recognise that that building might be there forever and they're keen to continue to work with council on what the future location might be, but certainly committed to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Martin, your last, please.
Thank you, yes. Through you, the general manager, I know that you met with the representatives of the Devonport Soccer Club and Football Department. I just wondered if you'd like to elaborate a little bit more on their master plan. I believe that it's shovel ready with the master plan.
Yeah, through you, mayor. Just following that meeting, we actually just received some information just last week in writing that proposal and we're looking at bringing that back to a future council workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? I just briefly reiterate councillor Murphy's comments. The staff are incredible during our election period. Obviously, we're kind of going up into the unknown and not sure how that was going to look. And then we really had to rely on our staff to come up to the plate and certainly do an incredible job of dealing with the public coming in with lots of questions, lots of confusion. And I certainly appreciate the time the staff put into it and appreciate everything that they did because it was not an easy time. It certainly is noted. Thank you. Councillor Murphy, your last.
Thank you, mayor. I concur with councillor Martin. Will the Devonport strikers be coming to the next workshop in December with, if I can, through you?
Yes, through you, mayor. We're currently looking at the information that's been provided and we hope to get it in the middle of December.
I think that's an exciting opportunity for Devonport moving forward. So I really do look forward to seeing what they have to present to the council for consideration. And I'll now consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. Six point five, elected members' expense report. Do I have a move the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Barney, thank you. And a second to please.
Second.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I would like to note none of those expenses were mine, but it's all quite detailed in the report. So just procedural, thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, mayor. I'll concur with councillor Barney. I know none of those expenses were mine, except for the digital expenses, which we all get, so nothing further.
Any further comment? Councillor Barney, would you like to close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Next? So carried, thank you. Six point six, unconfirmed minutes Devonport City Council audit panel. Recommendation is there? Can I have a move please?
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Murphy? Councillor Shane? Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, it's all there in the report, mayor. The two most important things is the fact that we probably ceased the shared panel arrangement. It has been a bit of a contentious issue having been a member of that particular panel. There really wasn't any significant benefit from our perspective as participants on that panel. So having that shared arrangement, it was some perceived cost benefit, but it did come at a cost with respect to time that we actually got to spend performing that function. So I think I would encourage our councillors to support that and retaining two independent members. We lost it. I support this, the simple fact being is that, well, not the report sort of alludes to, is that we actually have an internal audit process now that is undertaken on a regular basis, which is, has proven to be the two presentations that have come to the audit panel committee. Viable, very, very viable, that someone is actually diving in at this level within this building, going through the processes that could provide information to us that sit independently on that panel.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Shane, any further?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, one of the things I picked up in the workshop was the comment that occasionally the audit committee ran out of time to keep working on Devonport council issues, which for me is a big concern. I think while it is a little bit of extra cost in absorbing the entire audit panel cost, certainly with a budget our size, operating expenses and whatnot, I think it's quite prudent. And if we're at the stage where we're actually not having enough time to get through what the auditors and committee would like to get through, that's an issue that's certainly a need to address. From the strong view on the independent members, but certainly I think that shared arrangement, the time's sort of finished now. Just get one that does the job properly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shane. Any further comment? Councillor Holster?
Yes, Devonport City Council can have confidence in the audit panels we've had over the years. We probably had one many years before, but there was a requirement under the Liberal Government Act. And I've always felt that it gave the councillors confidence in the systems that the council had. And in the past, I know that our audit people or our finance people have been able to actually come up with requirements that a lot of other councils around Australia didn't manage to do. So it's been a matter of confidence over the years and I don't believe it'll change any now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Holster. I appreciate your history with that. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, your last.
Thank you, mayor. I can understand what councillor Holster is saying and a couple of examples that come to mind is the audit committee's oversight or review of Devonport and its IT and the cost of its IT. And the fact that we've actually seen that bear the fruit by being able to be responsible enough to manage and look at that. And full credit goes to Deputy G E, Mr. Griffiths and the executive team in driving that because it's been a massive plus for this particular organisation. And the second one has been the recommendation the audit committee panel made with respect to our debt and providing sound advice and understanding of the process. And the recommendation to council was one that had, you know, magnifying glass put over it. So having said that, mayor, consider it closed.
Thank you councillor Murphy. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. I will just explain, obviously, we're having a little bit of IT Devonport here and do apologise for that, I'm sure.
And I just made that comment, too.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a six point seven, we'll continue. Community Services Report for September and October 2022. Do I have a recommendation? Move please.
So moved. Second.
Councillor Holster and councillor Murphy. Thank you. Councillor Holster?
Open the report, nothing further to add.
Councillor Murphy?
It's been a busy month, eh?
Good, councillor. Any further comment? Thank you. Councillor Holster, your last.
Consider it closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Consider it carried. So I'll turn item six point eight, the General Management, People and Finance and Corporate Services Report. And that will be on with that average. Thank you. Recommendation is there? Move it please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and?
Second.
Second, councillor Evans. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Me, your decision, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Nothing further. Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Any further comment? No? Councillor Murphy?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. Six point nine, Convention and Answer Report, September and October 2022. The recommendation is there? Can I have a move please? So moved. Councillor Moore? And a second to please.
Second.
Councillor Moore?
Yeah, it looks like a very busy time. I'm excited to look at what the new exhibits will be, but everything's in the report. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, fantastic. Well said councillor Moore. It is very exciting and I think it's really, this report is really cementing Devonport as the regional hub of arts, the arts community here on the north west coast. And I think we can continue on that trajectory and look out more than half the state.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Any further comment? Sorry, my computer's doing something strange too, so we're having a bit of fun tonight. I will just point out, Mr. Dobson's got a Marvel Stopper with his team and we've got a wonderful season launch coming up on Monday, the 30th of December. Am I right? Correct, December. So if anyone can belong to that, please do, I'd be highly recommended. So that's very our season launch 2023, which I think will be absolutely wonderful to see. They do a very good job out there, check. So thank you. Councillor Moore, your last.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. Section, item seven, there's section 23 committees, which we kind of had to do because we've just decided to put our hand up for those committees, so we're sorting them out for next. So moving on to the closed session, I do need a move.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, a second to us, sorry. Councillor Barney, sorry. It's a little direction. Councillor Murphy?
Me, your decision, ma'am. Sorry, your decision, ma'am.
Yeah, nothing to add, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
No, ma'am.
Councillor Murphy?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So moved, thank you. And thank you to the members of the public gallery that have attended tonight. Very much appreciated.